All right. Good evening, Commissioner, staff participants. We will soon begin our meetings. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please begin the recording and display and display any relevant documents for each agenda item.
Recording has started. You should all be able to see the agenda momentarily. Let me know when you can see it.
Got it. I can see it.
I can see it.
Looks like we should start. All right. Good evening. I'm now, I don't have a gavel. I need to have a virtual gavel. I'm now calling the Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, regular meeting in Los Altos Hills County Fire District Order. The time is 7:01 PM. Please note that in support of the physical distancing during the local public health emergency, in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order that relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we are conducting the meeting via video and teleconferencing. Because we are video and teleconferencing, we'll follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. We will indicate when commissioners, meeting participants, staff and public will provide comments. If you have, if you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. If any meeting participant who was presenting during the meeting would like to leave prior to the end of the meeting, please state your name and announce that you were leaving for the benefit of the recording. Please participate, consider video and teleconferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting, limiting this distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. So, let's see. Okay. So I am going to be conducting all roll call this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comments or vote. President Warren.
President.
Vice President Vaughn.
President.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Sprehn.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
Okay. All commissioners are present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a staff and meeting participant roll call. So, Fire Chief Bowden.
Here.
Assistant Fire Chief Glass.
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Gluhann.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Here.
District Legal Counsel Segal.
Present.
Special Project Service Consultant Hendricks.
Present.
Staff and meeting participants are present.
Very much. All right. Item two. Public comment. Persons wishing to address the district on any subject whether or not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the district is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate actions, which may include placement on the next available agenda. Please note that while the district board will hear comments upon items which are on the agenda at this time, the district will not act on any such item until the item is under consideration by the district. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker. Do we have any public comment on the items on or not on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to item three. President's remarks. All right. So, thank you, everyone, once again. If back in March you had told, when we, the staff pulled together that first teleconference and we said, hey, you know, it was, it was dark when we held that meeting in March. It's now light outside. It's May. It's Memorial Day weekend coming up. If you told me that back in March, we'd be here on Zoom. I wouldn't have believed it. But here we are. So I want to, first of all, just thank the staff again because, one, where they've been able to take the district in this very short time, in three meetings, we've gone from no technology almost to now we are using Zoom for our meeting and implemented this. You know, it allows the public to participate, us to do this in a video conference. So to implement this in a very short period of time, I think is a testament to the staff. I want to thank them for making this happen because we don't know how much longer this is going to go on. As you know, we could be back face to face in June, or we could be doing this through the end of the calendar year. Your guess is as good as mine. So on top of that, making this happen, the staff, and we'll get a few more details a little later on, the staff has been incredibly busy on the response to the audit. That consumed tremendous amount of resources over the last several weeks and a true testament to the staff that we got that done, we got it done on time, and they were ready and they were able to prepare us for tonight's meeting. So thank you on that. And in, and in, with all the stuff going on, all our other programs continue to move forward. Just got the notice that people are coming to chip my brush, you know, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week. Our important programs that are, that benefit for the safety of the residents of the district continue to move forward even with the, you know, adverse situation that we're in, the uncertainty. So I think that's a testament to the staff. So thank you all for making that happen. All right. And with that, we'll move on to item four. Central government update.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. It's interesting that what you just referred to has brought us to this place, and that's the public health order. So since our last meeting, there have been two Santa Clara County Public Health Order revisions. The first was on April 29th, and that relaxed some of the outdoor activities and outdoor, for outdoor businesses. And then just a few days ago, on May 18th, the order is now supersedes the April 29th order, and May 18th order continues to restrict most activities, travel, government, and business functions to essential needs only, and continues to expand the outdoor activities and outdoor businesses that the prior order allowed to resume. May 18th order amends, clarifies, and continues certain terms of the prior order to ensure continued social distancing and limit person-to-person contact. This gradual and measured resumption of activity is designed to manage the overall volume, duration, and intensity of person-to-person contact to prevent the surge of COVID-19 cases in the county and neighboring counties. The primary intent of the order is to ensure the county residents continue to shelter in place of their residence. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? I'll call each of your names. If you do not wish to comment, please say, please say no comment. Vice President Vaughn.
No comment.
Commissioner Tyson.
No comment.
Commissioner Price.
No comment.
Commissioner Sprehn.
No comment.
Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Carr.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Kearney.
No comment.
And I have no comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? All right. So we'll now move on to item five. The Commission Ad hoc Management Audit Subcommittee Update. Item five A. We received the Santa Clara County Confidential Draft Audit Report. Confidential draft district response was sent to Santa Clara County Management Audit Division. General Manager Logan, please provide what additional update we need to.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The district received the confidential draft report from Santa Clara County Management Audit Division on April 26, 2020. The district complied with the auditor's request and county policy to submit its response within, for 15 working days. The district response was submitted end of business day on May 15, 2020. The auditors and county mandate that the audit is confidential until it is released to the Board of Supervisors and made public. It is not permissible for you or the subcommittee to say more until such time as a county makes the audit and the response public. And that's all I have to report, Mr. President, unless legal counsel would like to make a comment on this item.
I would just add, thank you, General Manager, that the next step, we believe, is that it will go to the Finance and Governance, is that the correct name?
Government and Operations.
Yeah, excuse me, Government and Operations Committee. We do not know when that will be.
All right.
I have a question.
Sure, Roger.
I know we can't, I'm not asking for the substance. I'm just curious about the process. Is the expectation that they will modify the draft audit report into a final report based on the response sent? Or will they include their final plus the response we've made as a public part of the final report?
The, it's our understanding it'll be the, the second that you said, that they produce their report, they put it in a package, and included in that package is the response that we submitted.
Thank you.
All right. So I just want to add that, you know, the, the staff and the, the subcommittee had 15 days to turn this around. And I, well, once again, I want to just reiterate how much time and effort the staff put into producing the response for the district. So it was quite an effort. So thank you all for, for making that happen within the, the guidelines and the time constraint that we had and the inability to actually get together and meet face to face work on the problem. All right. So any questions or comments or discussions from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No, no comment.
Commissioner Tyson?
I just want to echo what you said, Mr. President, about the strength of the staff and the, the way the subcommittee was able to really put the proper focus and give a professional thorough response in a short timeframe was quite, quite laudatory.
Commissioner Price?
Excellent job by the staff also, and congratulations for meeting the timelines. It were wonderful that you got it in on the 15th. Thank you.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney?
No comment.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? All right. We'll now move on to item six, Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. So, item six A, Monthly Report for April 2020. Assistant Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Good evening, members of the commission. It's been a little bit slower than normal month for us. As you saw there on page one, bullet point one, no significant events in the last month, which is good. As we move to the graph, we're on target right now. 228 calls for the year of 2020. We had 60 last month, and we're sticking with our, our consistent numbers between 50 and 60% being EMS-related, 20 calls, 33% were service, four fire alarms, two fires. The fires were obviously not significant. They didn't make the dollar lost value. There actually was no dollar lost. One was a neighbor reporting smoke coming from the roof of his structure off Elena and Josefa, and the other was an alarm activation that did have smoke from a pot on the stove. So again, very, very insignificant, which is exactly how we like to keep it. Neighbors looking after neighbors and reporting those suspicious things, our crews are happy to go out there and look into that. Hazardous condition, those are power lines down. We had a tree down in the Page Mill area, and so we were out there dealing with the power line down. And then those other calls that just pop up every once in a while, we get one of those that just don't fit into any other category, but we try really hard to make sure that we classify all the calls that we respond to. That way we have good, accurate data to report to you. Call volume seems consistent. Obviously, we're busier in the daytime hours than we are in the evening, but you can see the weight of the response. That is the orange bar is consistent with single-engine responses versus the multi-engine responses. That's our lower-risk, lower-acuity calls. Response times, obviously with decreased traffic, our response times have been reduced, which is another excellent benefit to the shelter in place in the COVID-19. If you got to find a silver lining, we are getting to the scene quicker to help those that are truly in need of our services. I don't, I don't remember the last time I saw a four-minute response time in Los Altos, but we are happy to, to have that, and so that's, that's a really bright note. In the hills, we're still seeing eight, eight minutes and 23 seconds, but our rural response time has come down significantly. I believe last month, we were, or the month before that, before COVID hit, we reported in an 11-minute range. So to be down around 8:29 for those six responses really is a dramatic decrease and an increase in service to the, to the residents of Los Altos Hills. We did have two programs for community education scheduled. One was a Girl Scout troop visit, and the other was our wildfire program. Those were both canceled due to COVID-19. However, for the brief time that we could do the drive-bys, I believe we did accommodate one, maybe two of the birthday celebration drive-bys went to the neighbors on short notice. And so we are still out in the community. We are still trying to make sure that the, the residents of Los Altos Hills know that the fire service is there for them even through these, these trying times. So I am happy to also report that Santa Clara County Fire Department has zero positive cases. We have none of our workers infected, and these are the frontline workers that are walking into the COVID-19 environment every day, unflinching with their PPE, serving the community through this trying time. It's no different in Los Altos Hills. So we're really proud of that track record and, and the crews. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Assistant Chief Glass?
Chief Glass, this is Duffy speaking.
Yes, sure.
Is there any way that we could offer a letter or a, for the Los Al, for the Los Angeles Fire Department for what they've just suffered? Is there a convenient mechanism for us to do something as our fire district?
Absolutely.
In support of what they've gone through?
Yeah. If, if I could ask the general manager, if someone from staff could be the point person, I, I can work with them, and we could definitely make sure it gets to the Los Angeles Fire, Fire Department if the commission so wishes to issue a letter, condolences. Nobody passed, which is good at this point. There are still two firefighters on ventilators. It was a significant and tragic incident, but we're keeping our fingers crossed for those two firefighters.
Fine. Thank you. That's excellent. We'll follow up with Jay.
Okay. That'd be great. I can, I can work with the offline on that.
Great.
Thank you, David. Good suggestion. George, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have my virtual hand up. Are you not seeing that, Mark?
No, I'm not seeing your virtual hand up.
Okay. If you check, click, click on the participants, and you, I think you would. All right. So I'll, I'll just lower.
I do see it.
I'll lower my.
Okay.
My question for you, Chief Glass, we, there was a, a grass fire in Palo Alto, maybe a week or two ago, and, and the smell, the smoke was very strong. I saw there was a rustling of concern on next door, and I just wondered, can you tell us was, because I was, I was surprised at how powerful the smell was given the distance from us. Can you say anything about that fire?
Yeah, I don't have the detailed specifics on the fire. It was around the Palo Alto dish in the grass there. That's a pretty typical spot where we do see a lot of wildfires. Obviously, it's Palo Alto's jurisdiction. They were able to handle it with partnership from local agencies. We did send engines to support, not necessarily the fire attack piece, but to support mutual aid into the city of Palo Alto to respond to their everyday emergencies. So I believe we had two engines that went in to support Palo Alto during that, while they fought the wildland fire in conjunction with CAL FIRE. As for the smoke, I was, I'm not aware of what was on fire, but from what I saw on the video, it appeared to be normal wildland material, grass, our typical, you know, fuel model that we see. And it just might have been the way the wind was blowing that you ended up with a pocket of more dense smoke over your area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Just a quick process comment, if I could. I would encourage us to follow Commissioner Tyson's model of raising our virtual hand. If that would be helpful to you, Mr. President, for you to see which of us would like to speak at any one moment, if that would save you time.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm, if everyone knows how to do that and raise their virtual hand, I've, we do that in other Zoom meetings, and I think it would help, may help speed things along and keep things orderly.
Yeah, so that is under, if you go to, open up your participant window, there's a button, radio button bottom that says raise hand. Okay. All right. Let's move on. So that was item six A. If there's no further questions, I'm seeing hands raised. All right, let's move to item six B, State Resources Overview. Fire Chief Bowden, please provide the overview.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody again. I was speaking with the, the general manager. We had a conference call, and we were talking about what we are seeing at the state level, and we felt it was important to give the commission an overview of what we expect this year, both in a fire season and what we are seeing from a resource perspective across the state of California. We've been pretty busy. Fire Scope, Board of Directors, has still been active during this time, which we have a seat on the Board of Directors. And so what we're looking at is CAL FIRE will begin increasing staffing levels beginning May 25th. They don't formally declare fire season, but that is a good indication of when fire season will begin, is May 25th. So we do anticipate an above-average fire season this year. While we did receive quite a bit of late rain and some early rain, the snowpack was half of where it normally is in February, and we are seeing overabundance of the fine fuels, the grasses in Northern California. I think President, or, sorry, Commissioner Tyson, it is, your comment is, is actually very timely because the fire in Palo Alto was in the grass up there, and we are start, starting to see grass fires earlier than we normally do. But again, we've got three years of buildup of those fine fuels. They're going to start to cure out, and what we're seeing right now is we expect them to cure and be, be receptive to fire in early to mid-June. So we're taking a forward-leaning stance across the state and having good discussions on, on our responses for fire season. However, there are some concerns with the impacts of COVID-19 on resource availability, and I want to briefly discuss that because I do believe it affects not only the fire district, but the, the county and all op areas in the state. Local government firing agencies across the state are facing budget shortfalls due to economic impacts of the shelter in place orders. There is concern over the availability of local governmental mutual aid resources during fire season this year. We are having discussions at the state level about that, and this does have a trickle-down effect, especially locally here, as we expect state resources, mainly CAL FIRE and CAL OES resources, to be taxed due to the shortage of local government resources this year. Bringing that down locally, we are already seeing the impact in Santa Clara County as many fire departments are pressed to reduce their budgets and resources. More specifically, in a recent special budget meeting in Palo Alto, Palo Alto Fire announced that they will not be filling vacancies caused by short-term leaves and will be moving to a station brownout situation to reduce overtime for their budget and to cut cost. Palo Alto's been hit especially hard, and this will impact services in the north when we are looking at mutual aid resources. So we had a conference call with the county fire chiefs a couple weeks ago. We have one the first week of every month, and it was a very difficult call to have as listening to all the local government agencies go through their budget cuts, what they're doing with resources to close, to close the budgetary gaps. And just to emphasize, that's just a snapshot of what you're seeing across the state of California. And when I talk about that trickle-down effect and we talk about state resources being taxed, understand that in the surrounding areas and incorporated areas of Santa Clara County, we have a lot of CAL FIRE stations. If you recall, during the burn preserve, we had several very critical resources on that fire. We had helicopter, and we had a dozer. And that's two of the, what I call the big three. That's two of the big three. When you're looking at specialized resources that make a tremendous impact to a quick containment of a fire, and that's dozers, that's hand crews, and that's aircraft. They make a really huge impact. Santa Clara County has no hand crews in the county. The closest one comes from Ben Loman, but we do have dozer in the county, Morgan Hill, staffed by CAL FIRE, and their aircraft, Copter 106, which is currently out of Alma, but will be shortly moving to Moffettville. So as these large fires happen and multiple fires happen across the state, those state resources get pulled and will often leave counties that do not have fire activity short of resources. We try to fill those from the local government side of the house through assistance by hire agreements to keep those stations staffed because they are critical to the overall mutual aid response. So that, in a nutshell, is, is what we're seeing from a local government perspective, resource perspective, and outlook for fire season, and that will dovetail into the next topic, which is patrol staffing. But I'll briefly pause to see if there's any questions on what I just talked about.
Any questions from the commissioners? Terry?
Yeah, hey, thanks, Chief. So I have a question about the safety of your firefighters when they're deployed, mutual aid to CAL FIRE for the big fires that are going to be coming up. At the Red Cross, we're pretty concerned about congregate sheltering, and as you know, CAL FIRE camps are huge and, and congregate, to say the least. What, what's your thinking on the safety of our firefighters in those situations?
That's a fantastic question. There is already a task force that was put together and a guideline document created for the Pacific Northwest, and all the fire chiefs have received that document and its COVID, its pipeline response in the COVID-19 pandemic environment. They are looking at multiple ways to address the issue. Of course, every fire will be unique in what they implement, but will be different depending on the size of the base camp and the size of the fire. But to give you some examples, they're looking at multiple base camps, moving logistics off-site, staggering eating times. So they've already got guidelines and a plan in place to help address that, which is really good because we typically, I'll get a chuckle from, from the firefighters that are on the call, Chief Glass and Captain Gluhann. We call it Camp Crud. Pretty much everybody walks away with some sort of cold or flu after spending some time in base camp, and so it is, it is a concern, but the state has forward leaned on that and put guidelines in place to help prevent it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I have a question. Okay, go ahead. Is it Melvin?
Melvin, stand up.
Yes, Chief. I had a question. How's CAL FIRE doing with their staffing levels for the new academies and that? Have they staffed the academies? And I heard there was a problem with the recruitment process. Is that correct? And has that been resolved?
So I, I don't have any information about the recruitment process. Talking to my state counterparts, there were, originally before COVID-19 hit and the budgetary issues at the state, there were an additional 500-plus positions that were going to be staffed up in CAL FIRE to further augment their firefighting force, both on, you know, administrative side and firefighting side. That obviously is being pared down. Right now, they are expected to have full staffing levels like they did last year, so we don't expect to see any cuts immediately in available resources from the state. But as far as the, as far as the academy, Commissioner Vaughn, I really don't have an answer on that one. Chief Glass, have you heard anything about that?
Just real quick, Commissioner Vaughn, are you referring to the CAL FIRE Academy in Ione or the local one here in Santa Clara Unit, the Rehire Academy?
The Rehire Academy.
Yeah. We, we had a conference today, actually, with the unit. Yeah, we had a conference today, actually, with the unit leadership from Santa Clara, and they didn't give us any indication that they had any problems with staffing. So it would have come up in our discussion today, and there was no discussion. They're going to full staffing, all 14 of their engines effective May 25. Is that correct, Chief?
Yep. Great. Thank you, Chiefs, both of you.
You're very welcome.
All right, Duffy's got her hand up.
Yeah, I do. I just have a quick question, Chief. You talked about the dozer going to Moffett. What role does Moffett play in any of our firefighting?
So that's the aircraft. So Copter 106, the current helicopter out of Alma Station, is a Vietnam-era Huey helicopter. And the state has pushed forward an initiative to replace all the rotary wing aircraft to the Blackhawk platform. It is significantly larger and will physically not fit at the Alma Station due to the size. So they'll be moving that aircraft when they get their new Blackhawk helicopter to Moffett Field, just like the sheriff houses their helicopter out of Moffett Field on the airfield. So it's just a place for them to touch off and park it and fuel and whatnot. But I'm super pleased that we're keeping that aircraft in this county.
Good. Excellent. Thank you.
All right, Terry, you have another question?
Yes, Chief. Speaking to CalFire staffing, is the discharge out of the DOC across the state going to impact the inmate crews?
That is a very astute question, Commissioner Currie. It has had a huge impact on the availability of hand crews. CalFire typically staffs up inmate hand crews. They're a critical resource. Those crews are staffed up with low-level offenders. They're typically a very well-staffed unit. It's a coveted spot. But because of the early releases, they expect a shortage in inmate hand crews this year. So it will impact hand crew availability for those large events.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no further questions. All right, let's move on to item six C, flexible staffing for summer fire patrol. Assistant Chief Glass, please provide the update.
I'll go ahead and continue this update.
Okay, thank you.
So last year, we only staffed the patrol when we had a red flag event or hazardous weather conditions. And I think it proved to be a very successful model, the model that we run in the rest of the jurisdictions that we cover, and more appropriate use of that resource. However, this year, while we still need to consider weather, we also need to consider the availability of mutual aid resources, Los Altos Hills, the Puns On, should a fire occur, specifically Palo Alto and CalFire. This will continue, obviously, to be on a case-by-case basis, communicated with the general manager and the commission president. But in speaking to General Manager Logan, my concerns were we may want to staff up the patrol earlier on days where we have a heightened fire weather, but maybe it's not a red flag event, maybe it's not a critical weather event, but based on the fact that Palo Alto's browned out a station, or if CalFire resources are in drawdown within the county. Those are considerations that we really need to pay attention to. County Fire is going to look at that across our jurisdiction. When the state goes into drawdown, where we will start staffing up our resources as well. And I think as long as we communicate that, I wanted to just gauge the commission's response to utilizing the patrol in those circumstances based on mutual aid availability and state drawdown. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
All right. I don't see any questions at the moment, but I think my personal position, feeling about this, I think that's a prudent thing to do. If mutual aid resources are not going to be available either through CalFire or Palo Alto Fire, I think we should, you know, obviously, look at what the conditions warrant, but I think that's a prudent proposal.
And I think, you know, the objective is to forward lean, make sure that, you know, again, if weather conditions are such that should a fire start, we would see faster rate of spread than normal, based on the data that we collect every single day through our weather stations, that that would be something that I would communicate or Chief Glass would communicate to you, President Warren, and General Manager Logan, to recommend upstaffing the patrol and also based on the availability of mutual aid resources as well tied into that. So it's a little bit more complicated this year. I believe that we will probably see the use of prepositioning resources as well throughout the county this year, and that's accessing state dollars. We did it last year when we saw a drawdown in resources. We had a red flag event come in. The state puts aside $25 million a year. That's now ongoing as of 2019, which is fantastic. And it allows local government to tap that resource, to upstaff, to pay for the upstaff of resources during these critical weather events. It's complicated. It's a lot of work for our staff to do that. It is a grant, reimbursement grant, to do that, but we will utilize those resources when we can. Those are a little bit more tightly controlled. You need to be in a very significant weather event, and it has to trip all the boxes in the form you fill out. But when those, when that occurs, we'll let you know. And that's a way to provide the resources and access the state funding to do it.
Thank you. George, you have a question? George, you got your hand up?
You see my hand up? Well, thank you, Chief Bowden, because I was sitting and puzzling through when you were saying earlier about the drawdown and about the resources. You mentioned CalFire, you mentioned Palo Alto. But let's face it, all of these cities, I participate in this weekly phone call, all the cities are in serious budgetary trouble. And so I think the shortage of resources could be much more widespread. And what you mentioned as a possible response on our part, given our resources, to increase or change our alert level for these fire patrols makes a lot of sense to me. And as I'm sitting here, is there anything else that we could do that would make ourselves kind of an island of strength, surrounded by all of this risk? I mean, we've got empty parking lots right next to us due to the Foothill College. I'm just wondering, in terms of staging equipment or any other reason? Is there anything else we can think of?
You know, I think it's all, everything's on the table this year, and we're playing it day by day to see what the cities do. I did focus on Palo Alto. I'm happy to say that Mountain View, they're looking at about a 7% cut, but no cutting fire resources. So that's really good. Up on the northern end, San Jose seems to be holding fairly well on their side of the house. South County, we're seeing some pretty significant hits. The east side of San Jose and Milpitas, we're seeing hits over there as well. So we're paying attention as the belt's starting to tighten. And I think for us to remain agile and responsive to those changes is critical and adapt our response posture based on those changes. It's just going to require constant communications from our staff to the commission, which we are committed to do. And if there are any other suggestions or ideas, we are always happy to hear them.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Chief Bowden. I think we should, I think the sense of the commission is that, you know, it's a prudent idea and we should move forward. All right. So I'll close this out formally. All right. Thank you. Any questions, discussions from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions. As a point of order, though, I do see we have one member of the public who's with us on this call. And are we sure that he is able to raise his hand if he has something to?
I'll get to him in a second. George, we'll get to him. Thank you. Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
No questions.
All right. Is there any public comment on this? Hear any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none? All right. Thank you, Chief Bowden. Thank you, Chief Glass. If you would like to leave the call, please feel free to do so. Chief Bowden?
Thank you. I will leave the call. Chief Glass is going to stay on. It was wonderful to see everybody again, and I hope you and your families are safe and stay safe. If you have any needs, please don't hesitate to reach out. We are always here for you.
Thank you, Chief Bowden. All right. With that, we'll now move on to item seven, General Manager update. General Manager Logan, please provide the General Manager update, item A, events and activities, and item B, which is the OK Help signs for residents.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. The cover page of the GM report depicts the fire hydrant replacements that have just taken place. And as we look at fire hydrants and the threat of fires that's on its way, of course, these are one of our major tools for preventing destruction and disaster. So it's very mindful that we really have paid attention to our fire hydrants. The one hydrant you see with the blue caps on it, that is Zapatini Court. And the other hydrant, the all-yellow, is the Horseshoe Lane Hydrant. And then you see some of the water spill that occurred as a result. Both of these hydrants were difficult to replace. And if you go to page one of the report, I'll go through the process that was utilized to coordinate with our various partners and recoup the damages for losses. So let me turn my page here. And you'll notice that what we do is work with the town, whichever water district is involved, the sheriff's office and the fire department. That's the coordination effort once the hydrant is struck. And then part of that through the weeks is to file an insurance claim if we know who the person is that damaged the hydrant. Or if we don't know that, then we'll file a claim with our own district insurance joint powers authority. Once we can assess the damages and plan to repair the hydrant, a couple of questions we have to know. Did the hydrant shut-off valve operate as designed? If it did, there's probably not a lot of water damage because the shut-off valve helped that. If it didn't, as was in the case with the two hydrants I just mentioned, then we're going to have erosion damage, is most likely. And so then the process becomes as follows. We, right now, don't have geotechnical engineer consultants to help develop a work plan for the installation and the remediation measures. That's one of the things that we have lacking, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to come back to you the next meeting, with some recommendations of a geotechnical firm that can help us with that. That was really missed this time around. The Water District representatives, they were there to inspect the pipeline infrastructure. We hired soil engineers to test for soil compaction and be on-site to make sure the soil was properly compacted when the installation process occurred. And then we had the contractor to install the hydrant, and that all worked fine. There was different recommendations to the district about a retaining wall. That's where we missed having the geotechnical engineer. And so with that, as I said, I reached out to the town. They sent me a list of geotechnical engineers that they use, and I'm going to come back with that to you in June. I think once we have that last element, then we'll have very rapid way of responding when hydrants get hit. We had a practice run, so to speak, when these three hydrants got hit in December. Now we're into high-fire season, and we don't want to experiment anymore. We want the team ready to replace the hydrants. So with that, though, Captain Gluhan is going to make some comments when she gets into her report. But are there any questions on that particular slide on page one? Okay. The next slide, page three, is a retaining wall. This is a engineer's diagram that the town is content with and the Water District uses. One of the hydrants, the recommendation was a retaining wall, but then I got different recommendations, whether that was needed or not. So this is one of the things we need to look at, but I just wanted to give you a view of what the retaining wall would look like. It would be around the hydrant. And I'm just going to ask Chief Glass. Chief, do you have any comments about use of retaining walls around hydrants?
Yeah, I'm just trying to look. It's very blurry on my end. I guess I'll have to pull it up on the other computer. But what is the distance between the hydrant and the retaining wall? Does that say two feet?
It does say two feet.
That's a pretty narrow space considering the size of the hose that we use to connect to the hydrant. And Captain Gluhan could probably speak to it as well. But two feet is, if that was the minimum, would be very, very difficult to put a five-inch hose connection within that space. Those hydrants that are pictured there are fine, but that drawing appeared to be a little too close for my comfort. I don't know. Does Captain Gluhan have any thoughts on the drawing?
Yeah, I concur with Chief Glass, and I confirm that with the person from First and Hills Water. It would be the valve side exclusively. It would never be on a discharge side. So you would have the footing for the discharge side to actually open the valve on the hydrant rather than the discharge side in its placement.
As long as that was codified somewhere in your plan, that would be fine. And then when you go out for your final inspection, just to assure that the functionality of the hydrant is maintained once the retaining wall is put into place.
Right. Good comments. Thank you, Chief. What I would do is if we did decide to put the retaining wall in, work with Captain Gluhan and the Water District and particularly Fire Department to make sure that we're not abridging anyone's access by the retaining wall to the hydrant, for whatever purposes it may need to be reached.
Yeah, that drawing does show a discharge on the two-foot side. So that'd be the one thing I'd want to make sure that they properly draw the diagram to the spec, as Captain Gluhan has alluded, that the valve turn-on would be on that side. And this one, it's showing a discharge.
Okay. Good. Very good. The other thing is on Horseshoe Lane, which is where we had the most soil erosion, and on the hillside, the engineer from the town suggested to us not to bother the vegetation there at this time because the ground was a little too fragile, and to wait for a while before any surveying was done or any geotech came in to take a look at it. So I think we have about a month or two, but I'd like to get that looked at sometime during the summer to make sure that we've got stable ground. There was quite a bit of erosion from that fire, from the hit to the hydrant. And interestingly, as luck would have it, that's one of the highest hydrants in the town because of its proximity to the tank. And so when that hydrant was hit, shut-off valve didn't turn off, and there was quite a bit of water loss and damage then to the hillside. So it's very visible, but we're going to take care of that. So that's pretty much my pages two and three. And then I wanted to move now into the OK and HELP sign. And I'm going to turn it over to Captain Gluhan and to Special Projects Services Consultant Sarah Henrick, because they've been working with the committee on these signs. And so, Captain Gluhan, do you want to take it from here and just go through the next slides? I think it's about three through eight.
Yeah, I'm going to actually have Sarah start because she did do the actual design. I want to give her the credit for the changes that she did from our previous signs. But just to start out, we reviewed that. It's been 10 years since the last time signs were mailed. We did have them available down at the town and at different public events for replacement or for new residents. So it is a good time to review the information on them and to make sure distribution, that people haven't misplaced them, moved, whatever the case may be. But I'm going to let Sarah go with the specifics on what she did on the design first, and then I'll continue with the cover letter with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Gluhan. So these cards have actually gone through a number of iterations. And if you look at them now, they're looking a lot more like how they used to look. I have sent them to I have sent them to Commissioner Price, Commissioner Carr, and Marcia Hovey with the Town of Los Altos for their review. And we've gone back and forth a few times. So initially, at the last meeting, we had decided that this would be a great time to send these cards out so that people could use them during the shelter in place. And so we designed the cards to reflect that use and then sent them to our search supervisors for their review and to get their input on the design. And they said, "Wait, wait, wait, we don't want people using these during the shelter in place because, you know, we don't have a plan in place to actually go and survey and do recon and see if people are putting this out and saying that they need help. We don't have any process in place to actually help those people. So we don't want to be advocating that they use these signs." Since that discussion, Captain Gluhann and the rest of the CERTS team have decided that they wanted to use these cards as an opportunity to run practice drills and to also provide the cards as a means for requesting help or relaying that people are okay during things like the shelter in place, like the PSPS issued by PG&E during the summer. And that we would be notifying the residents via NICSIL or Alert CC that this would be a time when you would want to use the cards. So the cards that you have before you now don't reflect that change in sort of program delivery. But we would love to have your input on how we can communicate that clearly. I'll scroll through, this is the OK sign. So it looks a lot like it used to. We have a little bit of preparation that you can do before a disaster, keeping the card readily available, going to our website, and ready.gov to study and prepare, going to the Los Altos Hills website, becoming a CERT member, et cetera. And then in the event of a disaster, where do you place this card? What does each side mean? And how can you monitor the situation at hand? So this is the OK side. This is the HELP side. They're both, they're the same, just HELP versus OK. And then the cover letter would be where we really discuss when somebody would want to use this card. I don't know if you can see this, it's a little blurry on my screen, hopefully you guys can see it clearly on yours. But it's just the intro to the cover letter. And I actually have it broken out into a few different sections. So if you want to take time to read it now, or if you want to, you know, convey your thoughts to me via email at a future time, that's also fine. So we just have a little intro here. We have a section about how to use your communication card. Again, this cover letter doesn't include any instructions on responding to a NICSIL or Alert CC message saying that you should use this card now because we're going to be running a drill or we're going to be doing recon in your district. But we will add that in before the letters and cards are sent out. And then on the last, or the backside of the cover letter, we would have, again, information for what you can do before a disaster, what you should do after a disaster if you're using this card. And then, oops, sorry, wrong direction. What you should do if you need more information about COVID-19, what resources are available to you. So we have, of course, our website where we provide updates from Los Altos Hills and the County Health Department. We also have dialing 211 on there. We have our CERT, Los Altos Hills CERT lines where people can leave a message. And they can also send a text. And then we have the social media accounts for the Public Health Department. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, I don't hear any, see any questions?
Okay, I can move on to slide 10, which is the county budget timeline for budget hearings. And just to remind the commission that the County Office of Business Analysis received the district adopted 2021 budget. It's anticipated that the submitted budget will be reviewed on June 23rd by the Board of Supervisors. And then that budget would be utilized during July and August until the time when the final county budget is adopted by the Board of Supervisors. And that's anticipated to be in August. And I'll provide additional updates at the June 16th Commission Meeting. And Financial Consultant Cory Vargas will also provide comments under her Agenda Item 15A. But you'll see on page 10 of the General Manager Report, those are the dates that we have best to our knowledge from county staff as to when the county budget hearings will be. That will then allow the Board of Supervisors to adopt the final budget for the county in August. So what happens is our budget for this current year, fiscal year, will expire June 30th. What happens in July and August pending these adoptions, that's where the adopted budget by the commission sent to OBA, Office of Business Analysis, that budget then would take place for those two months until the final budget is adopted by the Board of Supervisors the end of August. So that's the best we know at this point. There's any questions? Or again, Cory will speak to this when we get down to her Item 15. Thank you.
General Manager Logan, all right. Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
No questions.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. We will now move on to item eight, Emergency Services Manager Update. So Emergency Manager, item 8A, Events and Activities. Emergency Services Manager Gluhann, please provide the update.
Thank you, President Warren. So the Emergency Services Manager Update, I'll start out with a picture of what I did while the goats were here. I'll talk a little bit later about the goats, but there's, in the background, you can see the two diversion dogs or protection dogs that are the same color as most of the goats. And they were doing their job, that's an electric fence behind me. And just kind of a snapshot of the alternate vegetation management plan that Los Altos Hills put in place. Thankfully, thank you to Commissioner Spreen. That was not, San Jose had a mishap with goats going loose in San Jose. Fortunately, we did not have that event. People have asked me, "Were those your goats?" No, so, next slide, please. So the first part is Events and Activities of my report. I've done several remote things. Again, a key word I've heard is pivoting, taking everything we built, unbuilding it, rebuilding it. How do we get messages out? As Chief Bowden has talked about vegetation being an issue. One of the things, I think, with Commissioner Tyson's question, what can we do? We're trying to do that, we're trying to educate the public in their residential status of how they can improve their outcomes and how they can be proactive in management. So some of those things around earthquakes or vegetation of what we've been working on. So I gave a presentation to the Rotary last, the end of last month. And we talked about the goat program as vegetation. And I gave a short PEP or Personal Emergency Preparedness message. And then I also have done some PEP classes similar to what County Fire puts on, but on an abbreviated version that Anne Heppenstall from Los Altos CERT, City of Los Altos, has asked to go ahead and do some virtual classes. So we did two of those. We had over 35 participants in each class that is open to her CERTs and any CERTs in the area in Santa Clara County. We also did a new class, and it was an Emergency Preparedness checkup class. And it's a new topic, it was very well-received, but we kind of went around different items around that. Also attending meetings, Fire Safe Council meetings. The CERT, that's the county, the CCLT is the County CERT Program. And again, we're trying to discuss the longevity of these health restrictions. What does that look like? We need to have CERT academies, we need to have trainings, we need to do all those things. And what can we do even on a county level? So again, as Chief Glass talked about silver linings, one of the things that may come out is some virtual classroom participation things that have longevity to them and archiving. Even though some of those things do change, recently FEMA did update their curriculum. I was on a call about that to learn about those updates with the Barrier CERT Coalition. But around that, we're hoping that we can get some things that people can look at and even archive and look at later. And also help with recruitment. The monthly meeting, we actually just had the Fire Safe Council Monthly Meeting today. Some great information came out of that that I'll discuss a little bit further down regarding shaded fuel breaks. One of the things I did want to bring up now because it does kind of go into activities is the, what we've been doing, it's, there's kind of overlapping with what I've been doing with the CERTs. But I've been trying to bring in, and thank you to Sarah for updating social media, is the Shelter and Yard has taken the place temporarily of our HIZ, our Home Ignition Zone inspections. And they've had four weeks of that. The rollout for this week is very appropriate, it's prepping for chipping. So if someone goes onto the Fire Safe Council website, which we have a link from our website, they can see what they can do since a lot of people are at home. We will talk about the chipping, but we know that our chipping numbers have been increasing. It already was a robust program and we've had increased numbers there. First week was Borders and Hedges. It was followed the next week by removing dry vegetation and debris. And then one of the newer concepts in applying the fire science, the week three had the zero zone, which is that zero to five feet or the immediate area, and having that, what you should do in that area. Because that is a newer zone introduced into the 30 and 100-foot zones that were the previous standards. Been attending the weekly Public Information Officer meetings. That was actually today also for the South Bay Call to find out what other towns and cities are doing around and what's happening, especially with the new orders that have come out. A lot of changes that start on Friday around that and what that looks like and how they're facilitating that. And the biggest messaging, and that's something we're trying to be consistent with, is, again, educating the public to use reliable sources. So we're trying to drive people to websites like County Fire, like our website, those reliable sources. And then, you know, having the new accounts with Nextdoor where we have that activated again, where we can reach out and do messaging, our Twitter and our Facebook page along with our website. And then ongoing is evacuation planning meeting. We had started this back in February. I've since had a meeting with Marcia Hovey and talked to Eugenia Rendler from Fire Safe Council. We are going to move forward with the Saddle Mountain area, there's about 25 residents there. They're very close residents, they have a very strong network in that area. So we're going to work on that area. And Eugenia has agreed to do some remote evacuation workshop because, again, that was one of the activities restricted under the health orders. So we're working on what we can do. We're going to kind of combine the PEP class and the evacuation workshop, some of our mapping that we're working on, all those things. We've had some nice collaborations with the town. We'll be following up meetings with the town actually this week to work on some of these items a little bit further with some other items that we're moving forward in the future. And that concludes my update for Events and Activities.
Very good. Any questions for Captain Gluhann? Okay, let's move to item 8B, Progress on Operational Data Collection, Integration, and Mapping. Emergency Services Coordinator Gluhann?
So this one is very quick. We were planning to try to, we've had very much activity, I'm going to actually jump to Sarah as soon as I'm done speaking. We've done a lot of activity on getting, you know, we have these great sources of information that we're starting to be able to brush chipping. We're trying to get information on statistics and data metrics, things like that. We have CERT items, we're trying to update zones, all these things. And how do we integrate that data? Where do we have that information base? So we've had several meetings with some private contractors. And again, like I said, the collaborations with the town. We are planning to try to have this of a further discussion topic and possibly an agenda item on the next meeting. We were a little bit changed in this agenda getting the Management Audit Report. So we took some of the items that we were working on heavily and kind of to take staff time to direct towards that. So I'm going to let Sarah give a little bit more update on that before I conclude this component. Sarah?
Great, thank you. I don't have too much to add, but as Emergency Services Manager Gluhann mentioned, we are really focused on collaborating for this project with other agencies. So we have been contacted by the Town of Los Altos Hills who has offered to provide us with their base map data, which is a huge part of this project. And will really reduce the amount of time that the private contractor would have to use to actually find that information. So that's a great addition to our database. And then we've also graciously been contacted by Fire Chief Glass that the County Fire Department is going to work on getting us access to their Enterra GIS system, which you all received a presentation on, I think in March or February of this year. And so that's going to be another huge piece of this project. So we're really excited, we hope to bring it to you in June and get this started. It'll be a great piece for the district.
And then the final, just little final component of that, one of the other items that we, was a little bit blatantly brought to my attention is that we really, I was asked to provide a map of where the goats graze during their stay. And I really had nothing except a paper map with some pretty rudimentary drawings on it, not publishable in a public forum. So I did go out, and I'll talk later about that with the goats, but I did go out and collect some data to incorporate in some of these, again, the mapping things. And then Fire Safe Council is also possibly another resource that has some mapping components already in place that we might be able to utilize, especially with our collaboration and the pilot programs of doing the brush chipping and their management of that. And that concludes my update for the Operational Data Collection, Integration, and Mapping. Thank you.
Great, thanks Captain Gluhann. All right, any questions from the staff, or excuse me, from the commissioners on 8B at the moment? Seeing any from the public? All right, let's move to item 8C, Soil Erosion on the vacant fire district lot due to water pressure damage. Emergency Services Coordinator Gluhann, please provide the update.
Yeah, and I think General Manager Logan pretty much gave you a synopsis of that. But again, like, we have the soil engineer, we were missing the piece of having a geo-tech engineer that we have. We have the vendors in place that can do the contractor vendors, we have the soil engineer. We really need that technical engineer to finish all the phases. Again, as General Manager Logan mentioned, we don't want to have delays. We want to have this be an expedient process. Obviously, we don't want hydrants damaged. But when they are, we want to make sure, especially coming into fire season, that we don't have an out-of-service hydrant. And that we do that in the most correct and fair business practices that we can do moving forward. So we're really getting all of those things in alignment. So the process should be done correctly, fairly, and much more streamlined. And that concludes my update on that. And it will be a future item, obviously, as we move forward with the timing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to the formal closeout of this section. Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
I've got one question, Captain Gluhann. Are we providing comments to MidPenn's Government Impact Report that they are about to start for the Wildland Fire Residency Program?
Yes, I haven't done comments recently when they first initiated that plan. I did submit comments back when those were initially submitted for public and stakeholder commenting. They're getting to the phases where they're actually making the plan operational. So I do attend those virtual meetings, you know, to, again, get the components. But they haven't really reached out again for stakeholder input because they pretty much have the plan in place. But that is where I received my contacts actually for who I'm looking at GIS. That's who MidPenn uses. And that was where I initially made the contact because of those, the natural boundaries that we have and the planning that they have. boundaries that we have and the planning that they have. Jason is highly involved in that plan, he's one of the people that I've reached out to to help with some of that data integration. And so, yes, I am following along.
Captain Gluhan, you cut out there for a second.
I said they haven't asked for any more stakeholder input?
Sounds good, I think I got that. Very good. All right, Duffy, did you raise your, did you want to make a comment? No?
No, I don't know what I was doing, maybe I touched something.
Okay, you were waving your real hand, not your virtual hand, so. Okay. Is there any comment from the public? All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move to item nine, Community Emergency Response Team Activities and Update. So Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, please provide the update. Denise? Denise? Your audio is not working, Denise. Can anyone else here?
Can anybody hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to stop video. For some reason, the crossover isn't, can you hear me okay?
Now I can hear you, so yeah, I'll just proceed, you may be bandwidth limited.
Okay, I apologize, Sarah's having to jump through hoops because all my slides are in one group, but let me move down to the next item, and that's the Community Emergency Response Team Activities and Updates. So for six weeks, I've been doing cert check-in meetings, they're virtual. We've pretty much just done it as a, you know, how you doing, do you have any needs? It's been very nice to see people have a little bit of community along with that. Last week, I actually did a topic, I'm trying to integrate some topics now, so there's a little education and moving towards hopefully doing a meeting once a month again, because I had meetings all, again, like the unbuilding, I had meetings planned all through the end of the year. So I'm trying to go back to how can we do this moving forward. So this last week was resiliency, it was a short little program on what to do, and this is just one of the slides. And again, as I've already talked about, collaborations with other cert programs like the City of Los Altos, and I've also invited ECC members, which is the Emergency Communications Committee. They are mostly all certs anyhow, so it was an easy jump, but we're also trying to make sure that we can help them and support them in collaborating on training and drills. So I wanted to make sure, brought them along. In that, I've asked for a cert program signup where we kind of, I kind of did a needs assessment, being that I'm one person right now, I need the help of the volunteers, so I asked, I put out a listing of general needs and their input, and then I've had signups and we're getting that organized. And then around that, we're going to have them kind of be the group leaders for that with me being oversight, again, kind of using the ICS principles and doing some delegating. We're going to work on getting some of the things, getting permission to get back over to the ARC from the college so that we can get on and do small group, I know we did put it under essential activities and with the new health orders, even more because we're outside small groups and using proper PPE to do some of the routine tasks, also with the trailer and the off-site trailer across the street from the fire station. So we're trying to get that along with getting training and drills going because obviously that's something that we're weak on right now with this this new non, I hate to say social, that was one of the things I said in my cert resiliency, instead of calling it non-social gathering, I call it non-physical gathering, so trying to do physical distancing because social is important through this. And then finally, vest updates, I know this has been a long agenda item and it got some hiccups along the way, and thank you, Sarah's been helping out too, but mostly Dave Stewart really got the ball moving again, he sent out the survey because we were like, how do we size these things? Because they are a little bit fitted vests because it's a surveyor vest with pockets. So he had the great ideas, he made a survey, asked people to put on a large jacket, and then measure the circumference, and he gave a size chart that was very thorough, and he's gotten really good responses to that. So we should be very close to getting vest order together, and then we're going to extrapolate that, and in case people don't, you know, the vest doesn't work out, we'll extrapolate the sizes from that to increase the order to a minimum so we can use that for new cert members or people that didn't participate in the survey or whatever needs, so we'll get a minimum order determined here in the very near future. And that concludes my update for cert activities.
Very good, thank you. All right, any questions, comments or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions, great job.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No question.
Commissioner Carr?
No question.
Commissioner Kearney?
No questions.
All right, and the only thing I've got to comment is I had to go find my ski jacket to go put measure, you know, for the vests.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item 10, Hazardous Fuel Reduction Update. All right, item 10A, Brush and Wood Chipping Program Pilot Projects Areas 5, 6 and 1. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our Fire Safe Council pilot project just completed its first month, which is April's brush chipping and debris removal. For each of the weeks of brush chipping in April, chipping stacks were measured, tagged and photographed, and from this process, contractors bid on the chipping service per week. Bids range varied, and perhaps the variation in the bidding range was due to changes that were required on the contractors such as social distancing. We're not sure, we didn't have enough information just in April to really pull any thoughts from it. But contractors were selected and chipping was completed. Contractors were required to comply with the health order and social distancing. Observations during the month of April is that there was a range of bids, that there was an uptick in requests, making it the highest we've had since we know of chipping services, but there was also an uptick in cancellations. And perhaps that was due to the uncertainty of who could come into yards and social distancing. There was increased customer service to residents. So I'm pleased with the results of the first month. May chipping is now underway, June resident packages are out to the residents, and the July packets are soon to be mailed. And a report is expected to the commission with the April, May and June results in it. I think that will give us either two to three months of information, I think we'll be able to report more definitive data to you. But meanwhile, to ensure that chipping services are available throughout the summer and fall and through high fire season, I'm recommending an extension of the pilot program with Fire Safe Council, and it's recommended below in item 11. So this kind of sets the tone for that memorandum report that's going to come. And there's a cap increase for monthly services, the fee, in anticipation of an increase in service request. And as you recall, last month, the chipping exceeded the monthly cap and we had to come back to the commission, so this, just raising the monthly cap will hope to allow for the growth of service demands. Thank you.
Thank you. That was 10A. Any questions on this? Seeing none. Let's move to 10B, Goat Grazing for Vegetation Management on Burn Preserve. Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, provide the update, oh, look at that.
On this, as I alluded to, we didn't have a lot of data, so this comes from me taking a walk all around Burn Preserve where the goats were. This is actually a picture of when they go up to the staging area off Burn Park Drive. There's the, they actually have the watering component here for the goats so that they get the water. And as I spoke earlier, that dog looking, that white dog in the left picture is one of the distraction dogs, they're there for the protection from coyotes, mountain lions, other dogs that might get in there. And like I said, they are very effective in what they do. They arrived in Los Altos Hills to set up around April 22nd, and then the 24th and 25th, they actually, there's a lot of setup, they have to put this electric fencing up, and then they, it's moved a little bit inside the canyons as to where they, they also have a herding dog so that they move the goats and they move them into the canyon and they move them back up into this watering area. There's a pretty labor-intensive herder component to it, he's, you know, moving the goats, there's actually two gentlemen, they set up a trailer on the Ultimant Tank Water Site, so that was a collaboration and a thank you to Prisma Hills Water for helping facilitate that. And they were grazing on the preserve for about two weeks, and they eat everything and anything, so anything that they can reach, climb a tree, whatever, they help themselves to, so. And like I spoke to earlier, I walked around and did waypoints on a GPS Garmin, and I have that to eventually integrate into a map so I can show you better where they go and graze other than this picture off Burn Park. That is the end, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Captain Gluhan. All right, so let's go to item 10C, Shaded Fuel Break, Hazardous Fuel Reduction Page Mill Road Phase 1. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, Mr. President, good news. Shaded fuel break construction will start June 8th, and I'm going to ask Captain Gluhan, she and I attended a video conference meeting today with Fire Safe Council, and Captain Gluhan can give the update that was given to Fire Safe Council.
Yeah, so JR Call is the project manager, he's doing all the projects for Fire Safe Council excluding the Highway 17 project. You've seen him before at other meetings, he's presented in person. As General Manager Logan said, we are on schedule for June 8th, he does have the contractors in place, he is waiting for a couple of more resident releases for easements to go on to their property to do some of the shaded fuel break work. He is in the final phases of the permission and permitting with the Town of Los Altos Hills. And again, to remind you about the shaded fuel break, it's on Page Mill Road, it is to complement what Palo Alto has been doing on the other side of Page Mill, that's their jurisdiction. And the main focus of a shaded fuel break is to support egress and ingress or access in the event of a fire. So if fire engines need to come in, we want to lessen the amount of fuel or vegetation or heat that could be produced in a fire or places where embers could possibly land and start an incipient fires. As Chief Bowden mentioned, the grasses is where it starts, so they'll be removing the grasses by mowing, and then ladder fuels for the fuels climbing up into the canopies of the trees, and also just the volume, so since the horizontal spacing, they'll be removing that. Another side benefit of that is that the possibility of, say, a car fire starts, not having fuel so close to a vehicle that's on fire, so the fire department can get in and extinguish the car fire without it extending into the brushes quickly. That's kind of a general view of, again, what the shaded fuel break is, and we're very excited to, again, make some social media presence around this, use it as an educational process, and then expand it into other areas of Los Altos Hills to improve evacuation and access. End of my update, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Captain Gluhan. All right. So any questions, comments or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No question.
Commissioner Carr?
No question.
Commissioner Kearney? All right. One comment I have is, you know, it's probably too short, you know, they're going to start doing construction on June 8th, but in the future, I'd like the staff to consider a roadside sign if we're going to do another shaded fuel break or evacuation route, you know, this project funded by Los Altos Hills County Fire District, shaded fuel break, you know, I think we've done those, we may have done those for some of the waterline projects in the past, something like that to inform the public, you know, this construction project, why it's being done and by who, and so, and it'd be good publicity.
A quick comment from Denise again, I will ask JR, they may have something from Fire Safe Council that at least gives a little bit of information around that, and then we will work on in the future, having something like that prepared to give a little more information. But I'll ask JR if there is something that they have, and then maybe we could add to that a link to go look to social media or something.
That'd be great.
Yeah, Mark, yes, definitely, definitely we should do that because we did that with all of our previous things that we worked on with Prisma Hills Water, okay, just wanted to share that with you, so definitely follow up on it, it's great.
All right, is there any public comment on this item? All right. We'll now move on to item 11, Adoption of Resolution 20-16 of Los Altos Hills County Fire District Authorizing Execution of Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council for Chipping Services to Extend the Term of the Agreement through December 31st, 2020, Increase the Cap of Monthly Expenditure for Chipping Services to $30,000, and amend and expand the Termination Clause. All right, we are on item 11, let's go to item 11A, the memorandum report, General Manager Logan, please present the report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The memorandum report recommends approval of Amendment Number Two to the Chipping Agreement with Fire Safe Council. The memo report states the background and discussion section of the report states the reasons for the amendment as was discussed when I talked about item 10A on brush chipping update. The attachment is the, and then I also put in an attachment to the memorandum report, and that is the Community Resiliency and Integration Hazardous Fuel Reduction Chart, which was presented at a prior commission meeting. I thought this was a good opportunity to again, show the commission this chart because it really encapsulates what is a forward-looking, positive set of programs based upon the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, CWPP Annex 4, and our strategic plan, and based upon the budget. And as you'll see, the programs come down from there, Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction is one, and then Prevention and Protection is the other arm of those branches, then underneath, at the bottom of the page, are all the administrative services that we need to support having those programs operate in a smooth and in a forward, forward way. So I thought this was a good time to again, say, even though chipping is one of the services that we're very proud of, that does a tremendous benefit to the community, it's really integrated into all of these services that provide for resilient communities. So that is provided. And I can answer questions, and I can recommend the adoption of Amendment Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so that's the memorandum report. So any questions for General Manager Logan? Seeing none? All right, so item 11B, Resolution 20-16 Authorizing Execution of Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council for Chipping Services to Extend the Term of the Agreement through December 31st, 2020, Increase the Cap for the Monthly Expenditures for Chipping Services to $30,000, and amend and expand the Termination Clause. District counsel, District Legal Counsel Seagull, please present the resolution.
President Warren, I think that you've covered most of it because it's the Second Amendment, it is relatively short, it's Exhibit 1 to the resolution, and you said it sets forth that the cap, if you approve it, will be increased by $10,000 a month, I think it was, retired Captain Gluhan earlier talked about, the use of this program is higher, and we want to make sure that we can accommodate that. Corey can certainly talk to the availability of the budget if anybody has any questions about that. The agreement is scheduled to terminate at the end of the fiscal year, and as General Manager Logan talked about, in order to get some more information about this program, we're suggesting that it's prudent to run it through the end of the calendar year. we're suggesting that it's prudent to run it through the end of the calendar year. And then there's some technical changes to the termination clause that are to the district's benefit if they're needed to be exercised. It shortens the time period that we need to give notice to terminate.
All right. All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No comments.
Commissioner Tyson?
No comment.
Commissioner Price?
No, no comment.
Commissioner Spreen?
A process question. So we have yet to actually move for adoption of the resolution.
Right.
Is it appropriate at this time for me to make that motion for everyone to discuss?
Nope. Sarah says I can't do that right now. My script says I got to wait, get through this, and then do that, Roger.
Okay, just making sure. Okay.
All right. Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney? Is there any public comment on this item? All right. If there's no further discussion on this item, I will entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording? Ready for the motion?
Seeing no one else, I will move to adopt Resolution 2016, authorizing execution of Amendment Number 2.
And you are?
Roger Spreen.
Tyson will second it.
That's okay. Go for it.
District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, President Warren. So, yeah, President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Favor.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move on to item 12, Adoption of Resolution 2017, Resolution of the Board of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District declaring brush growing on certain described properties to be a public nuisance and potential fire hazard and setting hearing for objections to the proposed removal. All right. So item 12A memorandum report. District Clerk Vargas, please present the report.
Okay. Thank you, President Warren. So you received the memo report. And this is, we do this annually every year. Nothing new. Nothing's changed. There's a letter that is mailed by the county's debating program to residents, asking them to remove excessive brush. And if they're noncompliant, then a letter is sent to them advising of their noncompliance, letting them know that there is a public hearing happening. And that happens in June next month with Deputy Chief Julie Linney joining us. And it'll be via Zoom. So I've entered the Zoom information. I think that's the only change really, besides dates from last year, is the Zoom call-in information is on the resolution so that the public can attend that way. And then two weeks and one week before the meeting, we publish in the Town Cry or letting the public know as well of the hearing. So they can raise objection if they choose. And so really what we're asking is that you will approve the resolution.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So items 12B, Resolution 20-17, Resolution of the Board of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District declaring brush growing on certain properties to be a public nuisance and potential fire hazard and setting hearing for objections to the proposed removal. District Legal Counsel Siegel, please present the resolution.
I think you've covered it.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll go through the questions, period. Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No question.
Commissioner Spreen?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
I was just wondering when they announced that they're going to be doing it. Did they tell the people what it's going to cost?
Did you get the question, Corey?
I didn't quite hear the last part of the question.
Have they informed what they will be charged when we have to send somebody to do that?
You know, I reached out to Mo, to Mo Cumbra, to get more information as such as dates when the letter will be sent and what will be in the letter. And he didn't get back to me. I think he's probably working remotely. But I know in July, I think they assess, they come back at the end of July and assess the cost at that point. So I'm not sure, I can't recall if the residents, when they get the letter, told what the price would be or if the price is set up by the commission at the July meeting. And I think it's the latter, if anybody else.
I think there's some pricing that's published by the county for what their labor rates are or what they'll be assessed if they have to come in and do it.
President Warren, that's my recollection as well, that the labor rates are set. But there's no way to know what the charges will be until the work is done because they don't know how much work it's going to take on each property to do that. There are also other items that are assessed, fees that are set by schedule. But this is all done by the county. Our job is to authorize this and if there are concerns, to address them when Mo and his staff comes at the meeting and to the extent that anybody appears via Zoom or otherwise to challenge it, to listen to those challenges.
I'll request for everyone to mute their microphone if they're not speaking because I'm getting echoes from people. Thank you.
Okay. I want to just comment, if I may. Mo does a very good job of, this is for Commissioner Carr. He does a very good job of explaining to any resident that has any concern about what the costs are and the charges are. And he actually goes through several iterations of actually talking with them. And when the list does come out, he appears and talks to all of them. So anybody that comes to the meeting. And so he takes, he does a very good job, I think, of explaining what needs to be paid, okay, and how it's rendered.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kearney? Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
President Warren, it's Denise.
Yes.
Not so much question, just a quick comment. Again, since this is a punitive angle, I would also, I didn't bring up during my presentation, the home ignition zone inspections will be resuming under the new orders. Fire Safe Council is just getting the policies on how they can do that safely for their employees. And I'd like to see if we can make sure that we offer that information to anybody that's in that situation so that we can provide some fire science and education along with that, not just the component of the, I don't know how we integrate that into Julie's component, but I'd like to make sure that we have that offering to give education along with that, if there are any people. Thank you.
That'd be very good. Good suggestion. Thank you. If there's no further discussion on this item, I will entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording? Ready for motion?
Make a motion to move.
And you are?
Melvin.
Seconded.
And you are? All right. Duffy Price. All right. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to item 13, Personnel Update. Item 13A, General Manager Spending Authorization and Policy Development. Commissioner Spreen, please present the update. Roger, do you have an update on this?
No, I think the update is that we've been discussing this and we will be coming back in our next month's meeting with a proposal for the commission.
Yes, just to provide some additional information. We haven't been discussing this, but really the management audit response consumed all the oxygen in the room in a lot of ways. All right. All right. Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners on the personnel update? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No question.
Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney? Is there any public comment on this item? All right. We'll now move to item 14, the 2020-2025 Strategic Plan Update. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no additional update. Again, this was one of the items that didn't get much attention this last month. Unless staff has anything to say, I don't have any update.
All right. I don't see any.
All right.
All right. Any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 15, the Finance Consultant Update. Item 15A, Santa Clara County Budget Workshop and Public Hearing Process. Financial Consultant Vargas, please provide the update.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't know that I have much of an update besides what Jay presented earlier in the management reports that the hearings will be taking place in August. I did reach out to my OBA rep and I had a few questions. Didn't really get them answered, so hopefully, I guess we'll see if we can get a better update for you next month, maybe with some more information. And I do know that the Board of Supervisors website still lists the meetings that's happening in June. They haven't notified the public yet that they're going to be canceled. So I was trying to get clarification on that. It's just kind of, I think with everybody working remotely, it's, you know, communication's a little slow. So that's really all I have on that. And I think the same update with 15B, the credit card, is, gosh, that's been going on forever. And I last spoke with them on Friday and asked for an update. They said they would provide me with one shortly. So I'm staying in touch. But again, I think it's with them not being in the office to work that things get kind of put on the back burner. So really no update for there.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll move on. We'll now move to item 16, the Consent Calendar. Item 16A, Approval of the Draft Minutes of the April 21st, 2020 Regular Meeting. And item 16B, Receive Period Report 10 for April 2020. Any comments from the staff on the consent calendar? Seeing none. Would anyone like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Vice President Vaughn?
No.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
No.
Commissioner Spreen?
Nope.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney? Is there any public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none. I will entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording?
Duffy approved, moved to approve. Duffy Price.
Thank you.
Melvin Vaughn, second.
District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call.
Okay. President Warren?
Approved.
Vice President Vaughn?
Approve.
Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Approved.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to item 17, Received Disbursements for May 2020. Financial Consultant Vargas, please share the disbursements.
Yes, so I sent and posted on the website an updated dispersment list. I hope you all received it. I'm not going to read all of the new additions, but you can refer to the disbursement sheet to see them. And the total disbursements for May so far, $66,278.23. That is the end of my report.
Any questions, comments, or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 18, Commission Member Reports. All right. Vice President Vaughn, do you have any commission member report?
I do not.
Commissioner Tyson? Is that a no?
All right, no, I was, I kept trying to, never mind. No, just one comment is that I did attend Mid Peninsula Wildland Fire Preparation Plan that included discussions of how to do their environmental impact report. The meeting itself was a little dull, but they had very nice documents, including some lovely maps of their fire suppression efforts in the parks surrounding us, which I excerpted and shared with General Manager Logan. And so I think it's very good that we are alert to what's happening in our neighborhood.
Thank you, George. Commissioner Price?
It's interesting, when Captain Blue was just making her report on Saddle Mountain, at the same moment, I received an email from former Commissioner T. Cooper, a gentleman who owns a substantial amount of the property of Saddle Mountains. Apparently, all was very trying to be a contractor. So during the course of the meeting, just sent Captain, J. Copy of the fellow's name and information that he's requesting assistance. He needs to get some help in terms of either finding somebody or some advice. So Jay, you'll be getting it, and Captain Blue, and you should already have received it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Price? Commissioner Spreen?
No comments.
All right. Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney? Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to item 19. And that concludes the regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. This meeting adjourns at 8:49 PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on June 18th, 2020 at 7 PM. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please stop the recording.